Good evening and welcome to the September 11, 2018 meeting of the Islam Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with our pledge to the flag followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Today on the 17th anniversary of the September 11 attacks, terrorist attack on New York City, we pause to remember the nearly 3,000 victims as well as our servicemen and women around the globe and certainly our first responders locally. In accordance with mass general law, I want to say that this meeting is being taped and ask if there is anyone else in the audience taping or recording this meeting that they so identify. Thank you, seeing none. Under public comments, Mr. Florence, anything for tonight? Perfect. Council comments, any comments from the council? Okay. Town managers' report, Denise.
It always comes up so fast.
You're right there on deck.
Good evening, everyone. We've been informed that we were awarded a $16,500 grant through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, which has to do with recycling, reducing waste and increasing recycling. I don't know how that compares to last year. I thought it was like 13,000 last year. We may be increasing our recycling. I know the efforts are certainly going that way, but it's at least the same, but I think it's a little bit more. When I provided the building department stats at the last council meeting, I was asked how many new homes were built last year, so I asked the assessor's office to give me a whole count, and you see that, it's in the report. 2017, I'll just go to 17 because that's the closest they can come. They can't do anything about 18 yet. There were 19 homes, 14 new condos, and one other which included industrial business and any kind of use that didn't fall under those two residential categories. So you can see, this goes back five years. 2013 was obviously a pretty active year. There were 41 houses, four condos, and two other. So this is a community that certainly is growing. I've received notification from the State Department of Health that four new human cases of West Nile virus have been reported in the state. In addition, there are two, one, I think one is a horse and another is a llama or something, but human cases, I think it totals eight or nine now, and you have the report attached to this. So it, none of them are, I don't think there are even any in Hamden County. I know there are none that are in a close community. That doesn't mean we shouldn't all use caution in making sure that we have screens on our windows, cover up near dusk and dawn when it's the most prevalent. We've received 33,528 in premium credits for our workers' comp and property insurance costs applicable to our premiums for next year. It's sort of a discount, sort of a reward. It goes toward, it comes from our being pretty proactive in trying to reduce our workers' comp claims. That's what it's all about for insurance companies. They take our premiums and then ask us to try to not have to pay on them, which is all good for business. But that is a priority to do more training because we haven't, a lot of staff haven't had a lot of training recently, so we have stepped up the training. My philosophy is to host it in-house for two reasons. We get other communities to come see what we've got here in our town, and it keeps our employees here for the half-day and not off someplace else, and then they can go back to work. So hosting is a good thing. The accountant, town treasurer, collector, the assistant treasurer and I participated in a phone interview with Standard and Poor's in preparation for bonding for capital projects that were approved to be funded through bonding. Standard and Poor's comments were very positive. Of note was their observation that East Long Meadow appears to be a very stable community. Those are actually the words they used. And as it relates to our finances, you know, they don't know about some other pieces, and they said that we're ahead of many communities. In fact, they asked us a couple of times, "So how much did you contribute to your OPEB last year? Really? That's your philosophy?" So they were very, very happy with that. They said, although it's not a hard answer, but a kind of soft answer, that they didn't see that there would be any, certainly not a decrease in our bond rating. To jump a bond rating, you have to do huge kinds of things, and we have an excellent bond rating, so it should go well toward our bonding costs. We've again entered into an agreement with Walgreen. They're going to be providing our flu shots, pneumonia shots, and I don't remember what the other one is.
Shingles?
Yes, I think it is shingles.
Is now a two-phase or do I have to get mine? So if they go for phase one, they're going to have repeat customer.
Yeah, yeah, and they're doing it at no cost to us. They're going to issue some kind of certificate so that even if you have a co-pay, they'll be able to, they take down your information, and they'll be able to submit it to the state. It's to encourage more flu shots to be administered and no cost to anybody that participates. So that's an awesome thing. I've attached a flyer for the first fundraiser for the veterans that are working on a new Veterans Memorial. They are an amazing, great group, so likeable, so full of energy, so many ideas. They're going to do extremely well. Members of the Health Department and I met with representatives of our trash company, Republic Services, to discuss the issues that we've been dealing with related to their services. Republic has made a number of staffing changes that they assured us would help address our concerns. To add to the process improvements that they're putting in place, we've also agreed jointly to a meeting every 60 days to just keep them on track because it seems like after about 90 days, it starts to slide backwards. So if we go to a 60-day program, it should get them there, and we all win that way. To assist with discussion of agenda item 8B1, I've attached a summary of the MGM mitigation payments in the 2013 Surrounding Community Agreement, and Tom sent the agreement to everybody, so you have that. Also related to item C2, although you've received a copy of the proposed agreement for dispatch services with Hamden, I've also attached a synopsis of my talking points from our last meeting and the financial projection related that I had also submitted then. Finally, an update on two outstanding union contracts that are in negotiation. We're in the process of drafting the memorandum of understanding for the Town Employees Union, and that will settle, they need to ratify that, but we're very close to that. And for the Public Works Union, we have a negotiating session tomorrow and one next week, and there are very few outstanding matters, so I think we will have completed all four of those unions within 2018, which is awesome. And everybody's still talking to each other, which is even better. Some reminders for your calendar, this coming Saturday is the Regional Hazardous Waste Collection. The Health Department is very busy taking calls for appointments to get that rolling. They seem to have a very organized way. Community that I last did this kind of stuff for, everybody just stood in line and waited your turn, and if it was three hours, too bad, it was three hours. So this, they're making appointments for everybody. She's asking what kinds of things you're bringing. She's actually advising them, "Well, you can dry latex paint." They won't accept that, so they're reducing the amount of time that it'll take to process. Are you bringing a half car full, a whole car full? A whole car full of hazardous waste sounds really yucky to me, but... Also on September 15 is another car seat checkup, so that's another little thing going on. September 17 is kickoff for the 125th anniversary celebration. Unfortunately, I'm the one that called the meeting, and my mother-in-law's burial service is at 2:00 in the afternoon that day, so I won't be there, but it really is the organizational meeting. I'm pretty bummed that I can't be there, and my husband actually said, "Go." I said, "Oh, God, no, I can't do that." So I'll be there, and then it's probably a very quick service, he said, and then I can come to the meeting. But there are a lot of exciting ideas floating around, and that's really what this is, to elect a chairman, get the process rolling, sharing of ideas, maybe committees to be set up so that we all move this forward rather quickly. October 7 is Military Family Appreciation Day. You've received a flyer on that. That is coming together crazy awesome. There are huge amounts of things that are happening. We just had WB Hill just contacted us today. Could they come as an employer? So we'll be providing jobs as well as all the other services the veterans could use. It's really going to be a great day, I think. October 10 is the Flu Clinic that I already told you about, and October 12 is the first event for the fundraisers for the Veterans Memorial Group. Thank you. Oh, I have one additional that happened yesterday. I was approached by Rick Green from Hamden about, he is on the planning board, he's a former selectman, and he asked if he could come and talk to me about possible sewer and water expansion to Hamden. I told him that certainly I'm always willing to listen to whatever another community has to say. Bruce and I met with him yesterday, and they are really looking at the future for Hamden, sort of similar to what we're doing, which is a plan for our community, a plan for their community from a planning perspective, how they would, they're looking at us, they're looking at Wilbraham, and Bruce actually suggested, "Why don't you just do a line right from Springfield?" Ah, they said, "Maybe that's a good idea." I said, "Have you talked to the DEP? That's a piece that you need..." Ah, that's another good idea. So I think this is just a sort of discovery piece for them. There's going to be more to follow. We said certainly if they needed us to be at a planning meeting in Hamden, we would do that. I think they're going to take us up on that offer. I'll keep you informed.
Thank you. Question?
Through the chair.
Certainly.
Denise, you mentioned about the credits we're getting back from the MII8.
Mm-hmm.
Was that an individual study that we did that identified certain things that we were doing which needed correction, or is that something that was brought to our attention?
No, I actually asked for a meeting with our insurance rep to go over our statistics because it seems, I'm used to having quarterly meetings, but I was on the Board of Directors of my last insurance carrier, so I think we need to be a little more proactive. We're just a customer at this point. Before I could say I'm, you know, they knew that I was on the Board of Directors, and they'd say, "Sure, we'll be right down." So we had a meeting, his name is Mick Gerold from Maya, actually Cabot Risk, I think he works through Cabot Risk, and he came with all his statistics from the insurance carrier showing us what our, you know, major claims are and stuff. So I'm used to looking at that with a very critical eye and asking questions about, okay, is this a school-related? What kind of fall was that? What kind of accident was that? And then, so it's really Sarah and Karen, HR and I, sitting with him, and then we will develop a program, ask them to provide us with the programs to address those concerns.
Okay. One more question.
Certainly.
Through the chair. You mentioned members of the Health Department and yourself met with representatives of the trash.
Mm-hmm.
I had a couple of folks come up to me in very nonchalant conversations. Why am I getting blue stickers? Can you explain what the blue stickers are?
I certainly can. Well, the majority of blue stickers is because our contract has always said that the trash company will only accept 35 gallons of trash from any residential property. Anything over that needs to be in a green bag. They have not enforced that. If you recall, during the budget last year, there was really questions, and we didn't have clear answers as to why our trash continues to go up as much as it does. Come to find out that they not only are taking whatever from anybody, it can be 100 gallons, it doesn't matter. They're also, they're not anymore taking some businesses. Some small businesses would leave their trash on the ground, and they would pick it up. So we went into a program that we're issuing the stickers so that people start to get educated. Anybody that gets a sticker also gets a letter from the town saying, "Here's why you got the sticker, here's what you can do." We've contacted Rockies about the 35-gallon barrels so that they don't run out of them. Republic is on board now for even, they sent us a flyer from Home Depot showing the kinds of barrels that you could get that were, I think one was 33 gallons. If it's 33 gallons and it heaps over a little, our trash guys know that. If it's that barrel and three on the ground, they won't take the three on the ground. So they, it's really an education for everybody. The green bags help offset the cost of trash disposal, which is very expensive.
So the blue sticker is the first step in the process to identify that you've been doing something incorrect, and there needs to be a correction.
Right. There's something checked off on the sticker. There should be something checked off on the sticker, and we actually get a copy, a picture of the barrel with the sticker on it showing that something's been checked off. So we're going to the very high level of detail to make sure that we're addressing that. After they get that blue sticker, they get a letter. A lot of them will then call, and really, people have been pretty understanding, "Well, I knew that you did that, but you took all my trash, so why would I..." You know, we get it. We're all very understanding. We just need to get everybody in compliance.
Okay, but we haven't been leaving any trash to date.
I know the first couple of rounds, they were not leaving the trash, and I mean, they were picking up all the trash anyway. That was my direction, was, no, we're not leaving trash on the street. I think if they've gotten a couple of stickers now, we may be leaving the trash. But I think that's not until October, so because there's, they're not doing every street every week as far as doing the stickers, so they're doing the Monday because it's very time-consuming for the trash people to take it out. It's just one driver in each truck. They get out of the truck, they pick up the stuff, they go back, they do the sticker, they put it back on. If they did that for the entire, all the whole town in one week, we'd be back to having the problems they couldn't pick up all the trash. So it's a long process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Moving on to approval of minutes, the August 21, 2018 Open Session Meeting Minutes. Do you have those in your packet? If there are no additions or edits, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Open Session August 21 meeting without any further edits.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Under 7A Subcommittee, the General Bylaws Ad hoc Committee Report. Paul, that's your...
Yes. Committee met last week, well, most of us did, and our first task going forward is we're going in conjunction with a company which is, I believe, is called General Code, and they are going to review our charter and our regulations and make any appropriate changes, and we can either agree or not agree to them. But the first step in this process, it's a long process. We start now, and we don't really, they don't deliver the finished product until July of 2020. So the first step in this process is to get the funding, and it's not a significant amount, in my opinion, but we do have to get permission to be able to get this funding, and what we need is, to begin, we need 10% of the invoice, which is $982, and that will get us started, and then in mid-December, we're going to need $1,964, and then nothing until next September. So for this fiscal year, the first step we have to do is request, and I believe I have a motion here, to hopefully approve the funding for this initial $982. So what I would like to do is make a motion to approve the funding for the General Code project kickoff of $982.
There's...
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Do you have discussion?
Oh, discussion, you're right. I'm sorry.
So under discussion, I have a question.
Yes.
For $982, I would suggest, and that's pretty much what we're doing across the board with departments, rather than starting transfers now, if there's a line, is there a line in your budget for either consultants or contractors or something like that? There is in most, so to overspend in that line now and then toward the end of the year, we see how the budget balances out, and then we can ask for an appropriation closer to either the half-year mark or the end of the year, because a lot of times, you all know, departments turn back money. So if they're going to turn back money, I have the authority to move within a department and actually move between departments. So if one is way under, we can maybe give the town clerk a gift of $982 without touching any monies. So that would be my suggestion.
I have another question for the committee. The council's aware that the department had spent a fair amount of their time collaborating on a document to update and make suggestions for changes into the bylaws that may affect them. Have those changes been recommended to the Subcommittee?
I believe they have, yeah.
And do we have to take any action on that as a council before we move to the vendor?
I don't think so. I think they're all being incorporated in what we're giving the vendor and letting them run with it.
Doesn't the council need to either approve or not approve the bylaw changes?
Well, they're not changed yet, though, aren't they? Are they? They're proposals.
So this company is a codification company, right. So maybe, Paul, maybe you, Tom and I should, and whoever else, but the Subcommittee have a meeting with this General Code company to understand, because to me, they can't codify something until you all have approved what they're going to codify.
The council will approve it. They'll do their stuff, their analysis, then they'll give it back to the council. Nothing will be approved. It's up to you guys to approve it.
Right.
And they'll put it in form after they do their analysis, right.
But are they approving what's currently in place, or all the recommendations that the department's had?
It's the recommendations, it's the strikeouts, you know, it's getting where we go, putting it in there.
Well, we see that, but we have the strikeout version as well to see the comparison.
Exactly.
And I'm presuming that a fair amount of the changes are moving from, you know, the labeling of selectmen to the council and various things in that nature.
But there are more significant changes.
But if there are substantive changes, I think the council ought to weigh in on that. And we'll be able to do that once they do a first draft, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, yes.
I think we need to be really clear on that because that's not what I understood.
Could you verify that, though, just in case?
I have, and we come up with a different conclusion, Tom and I. That's why I suggested that the vendor come out here and meet with Paul, Chairman of the Subcommittee, and the two of us, to all of us understand it in the room together.
Tom, would you be able to ask the vendor to make a...
Sure, yeah, she said you'd be more than happy to come out.
Okay, so maybe that's the next step. Particularly financially, we can spend out of one of the line items assigned to the clerk already, and then make those inter- ledger transfers down the road when it becomes necessary.
Okay, that works.
Any other discussion?
Point of fact, in the budget process, we approved the spending of the monies for this software as well as the assessive software through the Community Action Grant. So the money's been set aside according to our budget process, which we approved. So why are we approving it again? The money's there. The money's been approved to be used from the community action.
This was in our last, this is when we adopted FY19 budget.
You mean Community Preservation?
The Community Action Grant, it was. That's what was mentioned in the minutes.
I don't know what that...
By then, President.
Community Compact.
It was during the supplemental budget meeting beginning of the day.
Community Compact Grant, yes.
Well, we have to wait for that to be even, I don't think we can apply for those grants until October, and I think Tom is anxious, as am I, to get these bylaws in order.
So why wouldn't we just take a motion to pay for it out of free cash for $982 to get it started?
Well, first of all, we can't touch free cash now because it's not certified, but I don't think we need to.
Free cash is certified late October?
Yeah, mid-October to late, yeah.
So we would have time for this presentation, and then we can move forward with that piece.
So that said, do we want to withdraw the motion since the funding could be happening internally, or table it, set it aside until the vendor is able to meet with the Subcommittee?
Well, either way, if we think we can get it funded through another source, if you will, then we might as well table the motion to approve it because we don't need it to do that.
Right. It's more or less redundant at that point.
Right, right.
Okay, so that motion is set aside for tonight. We won't take any action on it. And Mr. Florence, you can reach out to the vendor and come up with a mutually acceptable date for the Subcommittee to meet with the individual, the representative?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, under orders of the day, number 8A Licensing Matters, a used car license application for T S M A Auto Sale/Auto Trade. Is the petitioner in the audience? Would you mind coming forward, sir, and identifying yourself, please?
My name is Alana. I'm the owner of T S M A Auto Trade.
Okay.
I'm just applying for the license, you know, wholesale license office in my home, like, little chair like this, a computer, printer, that's it.
And my understanding from listening to the planning board, Mr. Torshiger, here in the audience, that it's simply a license to run this business by the internet, that there are no vehicles on property, and it's more or less just a home office license.
Or if they're stored in a certain...
There's no car display, no mechanic.
I'm also understanding from our assistant clerk that in order to get a used car license issued in Massachusetts, you also, the owner or the petitioner must show proof of bonding?
It's a surety bond.
A surety bond. Have you...
Yeah, I got it, but I'm waiting for, to receive it by mail. I got a letter from the agent.
That it's in process?
I got the proof, I got the number.
Okay.
The policy number, I'm waiting for it by mail.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Question. You must have had to have the same surety bond in place when you were running the business out of Hamden, correct?
Yeah, I have surety, but I think they needed a special one for East Long Meadow, different one.
Different community.
Different...
Right, right. So, I mean, the agent, you must be working with an agent, right?
Yeah, I work with an agent. I got it, I pay for it.
So it's simply completing the paperwork and just having the surety bond.
Well, you said you have the proof of the bond, it's just a matter of getting the policy mailed.
The original one, by mail.
Yeah, okay. So he's got, it's been approved, it's just a matter of getting the policy.
Right.
And when you do, would you just be so kind as to show that to the clerk?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about this legislation?
Through the chair, can we enter that into record as letter of intent?
Certainly.
To get the bond, so we see it?
You just give it to either clerk? Thank you.
I have a question through the chair as well. Again, it may have changed, but my recollection from my days on the planning board is that... I think it may have changed, but my recollection from my days on the planning board is that the only home offices you could have would be for an attorney, an architect, an artist, and this sort of thing. So, wha- I mean, I'm not sure that it's within our purview. I'll, I'll defer to the planning board, but I'm just not sure within, if it's in our purview to have, uh, even though you're not necessarily conducting business, you're gonna have a registered car dealership or wholesaler in a re- in the middle of a residential, uh, street. So, somebody comes in from the Secretary of State, looks, looks you up, and they'll come in and says, hey, you know, I, I bought a car from you, and they're gonna be, I mean, you're not seeing any people there, you're not doing anything?
No, no, I don't see no customers, it's not retail.
So what, I, aside from-
I just, I just use it a license to use it in the auction.
Okay, so the purpose is to have a license for the auction. So where, where are these cars actually being, being kept?
It's kept in the auction.
At the car auction.
So you're buying the car at the auction?
I ca- I, I bought from auction A, transferred to the auction B.
Okay, and then while you're, you don't do any preparatory work to the car or detailing anything?
No, no. Just the wholesaler.
Okay.
Even the, between the auction, there is no, uh, they call like a safety, like a retail. So we call, we sell the car as is, or it depends on the policy of the auction. We follow the policy of the auction.
Any other questions? Seeing none, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the used car license, uh, application for T S M A Auto Trade, LLC.
Shall I move? Seconded?
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm, I'm gonna vote no, only because I still have an issue with used car dealers in, uh, in residential area, even if there's no cars there, but that's just me.
There are some of these on the- uh, believe me, I know. We had one with our bill, our former building inspector caught a full delivery of cars, and that was supposed to be-
It's okay, too. And plus, you have to give some sort of credence to our planning board and what they're doing.
Oh, I understand, it's just me, it, you know, it's just, my own thoughts.
Motion does carry five to one. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, a one-day liquor license for Unico, uh, on November ninth, two thousand and eight, from six to eight P M, to benefit the East Long Meadow, um, high school scholarships. That is before you. Are there any, the petitioner is not here. I don't see Mr. Fuchero. This is a pretty routine. The Unico, uh, frequently comes before us for, um, a one-day license, as part of their hosting of a spaghetti dinner or a porcetta dinner in this case. It, the application has all the appropriate sign-offs on it, and it, uh, because the, um, they are a fundraising committee for the benefit of high school scholarships, they've requested, and it meets the guidelines for a waiver of the, the license fee. There any questions, uh, regarding the Unico license for November ninth from six to eight? I'll entertain a motion for approval of that license.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day license, uh, for Unico for November eighth from six to eight P M. Uh, in addition to, uh, that motion also includes a waiver of the fee, as has been determined they qualify.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, also, uh, approval for a one-day liquor license for Unico, the same type of event for February eighth of two thousand and nineteen, also from six to eight for the benefit of the East Long Meadow High School Scholarships.
I second that.
And they're also asking for a waiver?
Uh, yes, in both cases, yes.
Seconded.
Any other, any discussion? It's an identical event, just positioned four months later, three months later. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both of those are approved. I'm sure our friends at Unico and Mr. Fuchero will be happy to know that. Okay, moving on to financial matters. The overview, the MGM Casino Mitigation Agreement. Denise, you wanted to speak a little bit about that, and I also asked Mr. Federici, who was, uh, the chair of the Board of Selectmen when the agreement, the surrounding community agreement, was made with MGM back in, uh, December of two thousand and fourteen, to speak on it as well or to add in any pertinent details. This is primarily an opportunity for our, uh, viewing public to understand the, what the surrounding community agreement entails for, uh, communities such as East Long Meadow. My, uh, understanding simply from reading in the media is that MGM has similar agreements with nine, including East Long Meadow, nine communities that encircle the city of Springfield. So, that said, then, I'll ask Denise if you have some talking points that the public understand, can understand a little better?
I don't have significant history. Paul has the, the history on it. I did look over the agreement, and there is a quick synopsis of the payment piece. There are really no obligations, uh, for what those funds need to be spent on. Certainly similar to what I was saying about the insurance funding. We would tend to pair it with something that relates to that. So, for the insurance, where, you know, we're taking those premiums and we're reducing the premiums, the, the credits and reducing the premiums. In this case, if there are impacts to the town in any significant way, um, we don't really anticipate that there will be, although there's been some, um, um, first level of where are we on traffic in particular, that I would expect coming from the east, especially, people aren't going to wanna go up ninety-one and they'll, they'll come through the back way, Summers Road, Hampden Road, and end up hesitantly at our rotary, which will cause, um, traffic there. So if there is mitigation of traffic impact there or toward the Springfield line, um, we have a starting point. I think they did a traffic study last year. And, uh, then we will see if there are more accidents, if we need traffic lights. That's what I would envision this money going toward. If we need, uh, sp- special-
Additional police officers.
Right, special duty because of a concert night, that we find that when they have big concerts or something or big events, that that's when we need to add traffic details. It would go toward those kinds of things. I would see it more toward policing and traffic signals, which might fall under Public Works than anything else possibly. You know, adding a lane or something, that really not huge, significant changes to the community, but this certainly will, um, be off, an offset for anything like that. Paul, you, you lived the beginning of this agreement, so you probably know the intent better than I?
Mm-hmm. Well, back, obviously back when this hall started and the casino was just a, a gleam in somebody's eye, but they were talking about the potential effects. All the surrounding communities did, did their own various studies and, and we, we had, there were two, there were two traffic studies done, actually, in East Long Meadow. One was done by a group that was sort of not hired, well, I guess it was hired, independent, hired by MGM to do it. And then there was another one that was separate from them. And their traffic, um, what they came up with was North Main Street would be basically the biggest, in theory, biggest road affected by the casino. And one study showed a five percent increase in traffic, one study showed a six percent increase in traffic. So there was no significant increase that they could feel, you know, based on, on their studies from the casino. Um, obviously, we looked at other things, housing and, and everything related, um, you know, the effect on restaurants and, and to be honest with you, when we were going through this, we realized that, um, we were really a, a fringe community. We, there was a chance we wouldn't get any mitigation money because of where we sat and the fact that it really wasn't gonna affect us that much, so. So what we did get, we thought, you know, was a good deal. I know some people weren't thrilled with it, but in theory, we could've gotten nothing based on, um, based on some of the studies. So, as Denise said, we, you know, there's a schedule here of the money, and in theory, what we're supposed to do is set it aside for any potential mitigation. And there's a one-year look back and I believe a five-year look back, um, on any mitigation. And what would happen is, and the way the contract is written, we, if we find that there's some mitigating damages, we, first, we have to quantify that. And then if that would happen to exceed what we get from MGM, then there's a process to go through, where first you go to MGM and they would, if they, they would have the ability to add that extra money and to, to make us whole, if you will, because, uh, because in theory, our mitigating damages would be greater than what we're getting paid for. And if that, if they didn't have the funds for that, then, uh, the casinos in, in Massachusetts pay five percent into a fund. It's basically a tax for them, but it's paid into a fund to handle things like this. So that's, that would be our next step. If we didn't get satisfaction from MGM as far as excess mitigating damages, then we could go to this fund and hopefully get reimbursed for it.
And it's pretty much a grant process.
Yes.
The meetings that I've attended, it's, uh, you just have to validate why you need the, the funding and, and it's.
Chief?
So, if I can add a little bit to that. There is a baseline for the traffic study, whether it was done by MGM or it might be by the Gaming Commission. So there's a baseline moving forward, and they will reevaluate and we look at that, uh, traffic study. They also have been in contact with surrounding communities, which we've been part of, to take, uh, our crime stats out of our system, right now, our CAD system. And they have a baseline for, uh, that activity. So, uh, the Gaming Commission of Massachusetts will move forward, and they will reanalyze what the impact has on, the casino has on the surrounding communities. And they'll, again, pull out, they'll be pulling our data out of our system, along with other towns, uh, that are joining the, uh, the, uh, casino, uh, property. And so there is a, there is a baseline out there started for, uh, what you guys are talking about moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or discussion on that? So it strikes me that folks that are coming through East Long Meadow to enjoy the amenities of the casino, get their first chance at gambling by going through the rotary.
There you go, you're betting on it.
It's a giant rotary. See where you land. Might be a surprise for all of those visitors as well. If you would step forward and just identify yourself, please?
I'm Allison Ward, um, state, running for state rep out of Long Meadow. I just had a question, and it also relates to what the chief brought up. Um, I've heard from other towns that one of the things that's being looked at is, since the MGM deal was first, um, brought to bear and the, the terms were released, that they've extended the hours that the casino's gonna be open. Right now, it's open till, they're gonna be serving liquor till four A M. Um, and that wasn't part of the original deal. So I know some towns I've heard are looking at policing and if that affects staffing or any of the resources you would have to put toward, similar to like bars closing at different hours. So I do know that I've heard, I've talked to some people on the Gaming Commission, that, um, safety and, um, traffic are two of the big issues, that you can really look at a community agreement and potentially look for more mitigating funds. So I would just put that on the radar. Obviously, um, the chief would know better than I, if that's something that would affect. But I would think this would be somewhat of a cut-through for people trying to avoid the highways, especially if they've been drinking late at night, that, um, it might be something worth keeping an eye on or even going back for more funds.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, um, moving on then to item eight B two, Discussion of the Five-Year Capital Plan. That, uh, spreadsheet was given to us at our last meeting on, when was it, August twenty-first? And, um, Denise, I recall that you were going to send us the-
A split, and I haven't finished.
A split format, yeah.
I need to, I need to be sure it's right.
Okay.
As, as I had to resend this one.
Yep.
I had three-quarters away split the other one when I realized there was some errors in that, so.
So, to be fair, are we just setting this aside for this evening, unless there are some?
It's up to you all. I mean, I, if you have any questions on this, this is a little harder to read than it is when it's split out by school board and, um, the enterprise funds are pulled out of this, so that's totally up to you all.
I, I'm, um, I, I'd lean toward setting it aside till we, you're able to send that to us?
Yeah.
And it's three-quarters away done. I just need to proof it again and make sure.
Do we need a motion to do that, or we just have an understanding that we're not discussing that tonight?
Understanding.
Thank you. Fair enough.
So it'll just remain on the agenda then?
Correct, thank you. Okay, uh, under Old Business, the two thousand and eighteen state primary election results. Mr. Florence?
Yeah. Yeah, just a quick update. A week ago today, there was the election at Burstlin Park for the state primary. And we had a better than expected forecast at a fifteen percent turnout. We had eighteen point four percent, or twenty-one hundred and fifty-five voters. You know, the, uh, primary went, went very smooth. The numbers tied back, which is good. And that all sets us up for the November sixth election. Um, again, the primaries did, what they do is they separate down to one candidate per party. And that's, uh, and that's what it did. And again, the big challenge for the primaries, there's the unenrolled voters. You gotta declare if you're gonna take a Democrat and Republican ballot. So, we did that, and get all the numbers tied back. The results, uh, are all posted on the website.
Good.
And they're posted in your handles.
And you have those in your packet. And going forward for the November sixth, uh, state election, residents, uh, who are registered to vote, have the option of voting early or no?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, the dates of October twenty-second to November second. Uh, they have the, the option from eight o'clock A M. to four o'clock P M.
To come to your office?
To come into the, uh, actually, the library community room will be set up, uh, so they can, uh, they can vote off appropriate administration and personnel in there. And what that does, it's, it has cut back traffic at Burstlin Park, uh, for the November sixth election, uh, pretty favorably. So, it just makes the flow in there for a populated election in and out pretty, uh, pretty favorable.
And, uh, I'm aware that the, on, as, in the school calendar, November sixth is no school for students, but there will be staff development for all employees. But that will certainly take the blessing and student, uh, students-on-foot factor off the table.
Exactly.
So, that's gonna help.
You know, the, the pick-up and drop-off.
Right. Will not be in play that day, which is good.
Yeah, and I just want to say one last thing. We had an election worker who was with us for twelve years. Uh, her name's Arilla Gavazzi, and she's from Ridge Road, and she, you know, unfortunately passed away recently. So I just wanted to, to recognize her for her twelve years of dedication and service. And she did something similar in the city of Springfield for years before that, so. Just wanted to bring that up to the council.
We have a lot of dedicated volunteers who come out faithfully for the elections and it's, it's important work on that day, but sometimes it gets a little tedious to be, you know, focused on, and it's a very long day for them.
It is, but everything, you know.
Start to finish.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also under Old Business, item eight C two, Discussion of Dispatch. I sent the council some backup information, um, over the weekend that I received from our town attorney, Kevin Maynard, relative to the, uh, dispatch, uh, draft agreement that was being proposed to the town of Hampden. My understanding is that it has been proposed, Denise?
Yes, it has.
Has there been, I know it's only a few days, but has there been any response, any noise coming from Hampden?
I am, uh-
I don't mean noise in a disrespectful way.
Some kinds of noise coming.
Chatter.
Chatter.
The, um, um, I will be, I try to minimize my calls to the town attorney, 'cause each one is, you know, kicked away. So, um, I will see him tomorrow for negotiations with the, uh, Public Works Union. So, I try to sneak in those conversations when we have to caucus for a few minutes. So, how's the other thing going? So that'll be one of the things to see. It is going from attorney to attorney, so, um, it was sent to their attorney prior to you all getting it. And I have, uh, Hampden had a Board of Selectmen's meeting last night. I don't think it was on their agenda. I'm kinda following their agendas. That, the Board of Selectmen and now the planning board with the water thing. And I didn't see that that was on there, but I don't know.
So it may still be some time before.
Yeah, I, I would imagine, this is, although it follows the agreement that you saw, and did he send you the red line as well?
He did.
So you saw-
Council has both.
It, it was the, um, basic agreement that was, had been worked on for months before, but the names were switched. Housing it in East Long Meadow rather than Hampden, and, which eliminated a lot of sections. But basically, the substance of the agreement, how the governing was to be done, was the same. The sharing of services is the same, but, um, the, the big, uh, additional change is that we went to a flat rate, which at the end of the day saved- which at the end of the day saves Hamden money and saves us money. So it should be an attractive agreement for both sides and substantively on the same idea as it was just flipping whose, whose house it's gonna be in.
Um, just a question, and again, no one is able at this point to look into the crystal ball and we understand that. The two attorneys have it at this level right now. But if, um, down the road, when a decision is made by Hamden to, um, enter into an agreement, should that be a no? Then where does, what's the future of a dispatch agreement? Would, would, are you envisioning?
A question to you all that I kind of presented at the last council meeting. Um, you've approved funding so that we have enough funding to start dispatch now, um, in-house. And, and in reality, you asked if, if at some point Munson decided to come. If Hamden was a no and Munson decided to come on board, would we entertain that? Well, we really don't have a product to sell right now. We'd kind of have to establish our dispatch and we've got a, what we feel is really a great way of addressing the dispatch. And then, um, having, um, having then a product that we can say, yeah, Munson, um, you can join us. We've been doing it now for six months. It, we have proven numbers for the six months of expenses. It, where the, the flat rate can be based on a per capita. So we would likely do that as well, so that it is a per capita fee that we could come to Munson. Or any community would be a flat rate, but I think that's a little dangerous in that, um, if it's, if it's a flat rate for, for either, um, community and one is large and one is small, that doesn't really work. So I think it'll be, um, a per capita based on whatever we settle with, with Hamden if we can do that. And we're really optimistic. It's a good deal for Hamden. I think, uh, across the board, we would be in, in a good place, both sides. So the question to you all is if we can do the, um, hiring, whether we're with Hamden or not, it goes to what the discussion has been for a couple of years, that we should get our officers that are paid officers rates on the street and have dispatch paid at a dispatch rate, which is less than the guys that are on the street for the more dangerous jobs. It also allows us to start dispatch training now with new systems that are coming on board for less people. Um, I think the Ham, uh, the, uh, agreement with Hamden is, how many is it? I'm sorry, Jeff, to call you on, on that, but how many total people is our proposal?
I think it's nine. Six full-time.
And. Part-time.
To do a three, a twenty-four.
Twenty-four, seven. Um. Two, two, one in the middle of the night when it would be less busy. So, um, to put that in place now, we have the funding in place for that. It would take the training for those folks rather than for all of our police force and then hopefully be looking down the line to establish the dispatch. It's, um, it's something that we talked about when I first came on board and again, last year we did some funding for it. So to go to civilian now, whether Hamden says yes or no, whether we're approached by Munson is really the key that the council needs to decide because we could do it now for this year with the funding that we have, but we can't do that in a vacuum. We need to know that next year when we come, if we don't have a partner at that point, that it will be fully funded by the town of East Long Meadow, so, and we would continue to look for a partner.
Discussion, yes.
Yeah, so I guess it was our intention when we approved that from a budgetary standpoint, that, that was the plan. Um, having said that, I mean, eventually we have to find a partner or it's gonna be mandated that we find a partner and we'll end up in a different situation. So I, I mean, I, I've kind of been of the mindset, you know, based on the information that we had, that we have to move forward in some capacity because for all the reasons that Denise just laid out. I have no problem moving forward and authorizing the hiring because essentially we already, we already did that. I just, you know, I guess we're, we're somewhat hopeful that this and optimistic that this will work out. But if we don't, we still eventually are gonna have to address a partnership with somebody and that might be going back to Chickaby, Long Meadow or some, somebody else at some point. Because if Hamden says no, Munson's not necessarily appropriate. I mean, they're much smaller than us. We're back in a situation where we're the bigger of the two and then they have to acquiesce to what we're saying because now we've started to hire and, and we're in our facility. I, I would want it, if we're gonna enter into an agreement and we're the bigger of anybody that we're partnering with, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, so. We approved the money, we have to give them some marching orders. So I'm okay with starting the hiring process, getting them trained sooner than later. But I just, you know, I guess the, the last comment I would make is, um, if it doesn't work out, then we probably have to, we as a group probably have to reassess and what our long-term plans are gonna be.
Just a, a point of information, uh, my sense would be if, if it didn't work out and we were to, uh, choose to approach Chickaby slash Long Meadow, that IME is already established and functional. We would be entering into that as the third town in and we would not be the, we would not go there as the host. We're going as, um, what's the, the other word that we would be using? We'd be the, the municipality paying the flat fee or getting an invoice of some nature.
Right, and I guess that's what I'm saying is that we're, we're kind of like, we've taken so much time to get here. Trying to go down that road again and not authorizing hiring is, what do we, you know, so it, it, we're kind of stuck in no man's land. You know, we hope that this'll work out for the best, but it doesn't mean that, you know, and I would hate to hire a bunch of people and then a year or two down the road then make that decision. But I would say that would be a long-term, for me, going back through that route at this point would have to be like a long-term initiative, not something that we'd look to because it would just take too much time to do again. And we would lose however much time vetting that out if they're willing to, you know, accept us back into, you know, we just don't know any of that information.
Correct, and that's putting the cart before the horse.
Right, and that's why I kind of feel like at this point, why not proceed with our Plan B, which is what we already appropriated funds for?
Any other discussion?
Through the chair. Um, over to, since our last meeting, I decided to, um, do a little research. So I visited the Hamden Police Department, uh, building. I had personal interviews with both our police chief and fire chief at their respective offices. And I also reached out to, uh, you know, the director of PSAP and I ended up talking to the regional PSAP coordinator Christine Wingfield today. And based on what I discussed and my own conclusions and so forth is I to- totally support having it in East Long Meadow. Our concern is, I think the state is working on trying to reduce the amount of 911 equipment out there. So once you give it up, you ain't getting it back. It is gonna be a big challenge because right now we'd have it and within a certain period of time they'd take it away from us if we went to Hamden or Chickaby or what have you. And if it didn't work out with them, then it would, we would be in a position where we'd have to either purchase it and we'd have to get permission from them, but not only them, their bosses over at the, I wrote this, I noted it in the contract, the executive office of public safety, safety would also have to chime in. So it's not a simple fait accompli that we would be getting this equipment back if it didn't work out. So, um, they're striving to do it. I don't think there's an end date. There might be an end date to getting a certain kind of money, but at the end of the day, if our deal with Hamden didn't work out, we'd be spending a lot of money and we'd be losing certifications of people that have already, already trained. Their certifications would lapse. So we'd be really behind the eight ball and there's no guarantee that we even get 911 equipment back again because their goal is to again, to reduce it. So, uh, I, I support, especially after doing this, uh, research, I support the course we're currently taking.
Any other discussion?
Oh, again, through the chair. I did share with all you guys, uh, the contact information for Christine from the state and she, including her cell phone number. So, uh, you're more than welcome, you have to ask her independently and, uh, you know, some of the tough questions that you might be carrying yourself.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I don't disagree with what's been said. I, I know this is a difficult position that we're in, but if we hire, and I've got the document in front of me, the dispatch director for full-time dispatchers and five part-time? How are we gonna back out of that? How are we going to remove the staffing and then go on somewhere else?
I have an answer to that. It, it would not be, we're not advertising or planning on advertising for all of that staffing at once. What we plan to do if we get the go-ahead is get a director on board. Um, that person needs to establish our dispatch. They will be a working director, so they would be there manning the, uh, the dispatch. Um, and they would be the first one that would get all the training and then they would slowly start hiring the other dispatchers. So it's not a full force as of today. The, the go-ahead for right now would be to get that director on board so that we could start establishing the dispatch.
No, I under, I understand that and I guess that was my concern too, is that that's the worst thing we could possibly do is hire somebody and then change course. So, you know, but, but at the same point, we're, we're at the crossroad. I mean, we are, we do have to pick a path and it, and it seems like, um, it seems like we're, we're heading there and, and hopefully we won't have to change course, you know, that will establish these employees as East Long Meadow employees. And that would be horrific if we had to then change course and, you know, and then abolish those positions because we're entering into an agreement with somebody that's bigger than us that's not gonna come to ours. But that would be, I, I just, I, I can't see if we'd go in this direction, doing that anytime in the short term. It's just gonna take too long for us to, to change courses. That's why I kind of felt like, you know, we've allocated the money, we knew how many positions they would be, you know, but I'm, I, I mean, I have the same concern as Tom does, but, but I still think we have to move forward.
So I have a question for either or both of our chiefs. Um, if the green light is given to you, how quickly would this come to pass?
Uh, the green light for which direction?
To do some hiring.
So go, whether without Hamden on board.
Correct, which is what the manager's saying.
Um, we're at the middle of September right now. I think we could probably get somebody, um, up and running with a job posting, probably a director, probably hired by November 1st. At the latest, is that fair? That was been our original target date, November 1st, to hire a director and from then give them the authority to move forward and plan out a roadmap for, um, uh, the dispatch center.
January 1st would be a real aggressive goal.
For everybody.
For everybody, for to have it up and running, trained, um, but by the end of January is, is a more realistic.
So February 1st?
February 1st would be the drop dead. And I, you know, I hear the discussion about, you know, what if somebody big comes into the picture? I'm here for a long time. I don't wanna see anything fail and I would say the only reason why we would pick this up and move it somewhere else is if it was one of those deals where the money was right and it's gonna save the town a lot of money and, and, and improve the service, what we believe is gonna be a, a Class A regional, I mean, uh, emergency dispatch center. Whether it's regional or not with Hamden or Munson or whoever comes in, that's fine. But we wanna, we wanna improve what we have and, and bring it to the next level, which is what the, the, the regional concept does. So, um, to dismantle it in a year or two, I don't see that happening because I, I mean, I think we got some quality people that are working on this project that, I mean, the goal is, is, is a quality piece of, uh, a quality department.
Yes.
Uh, through the, through the chair. Um, just for qual, just for the, um, hiring of this director, what are some of the skills we'd be looking for in that individual? I mean, something important to me would be someone with actual Massachusetts experience with that.
Right, we have, um, through our HR, she's already provided a, a number of, uh, director, um, job descriptions that we, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Um, and there has been quite a few, um, postings lately. And, um, each, Westfield had a twelve applying for their, their director's job and their director left and went to Gojin, so it's out there. And the money we've talked about, but the money we've talked about.
Chief, I just wanna interrupt. I'm getting a signal from Mr. Mackey that we need to have you both in front of the microphone for our, our visitors are viewing.
We've got microphones everywhere in here, though.
So as far as qualifications go, there's some certifications that are required for, um, for dispatchers themselves and then there's, uh, upper level for more management style. Uh, and then there's also, um, when you get into the emergency medical dispatching, there's a whole nother line of certifications and that's where we're, um, we're kind of pushing for it with Denise was talking about some new training. Uh, part of our project is, is new software, which we, we're, we're being, um, required to upgrade what we, what we currently have. Um, so to, to train nine compared to the 24 police officers and, and, um, sergeants is, is cost savings, not only for us, but for the, um, the state itself because they helped pay for part of that, so.
Well, the qualifications are out there. They're in the, they're in, they're in the state pipeline. They know what's, uh, required to have certain positions. We'll just, you know, cut and paste some out of what's currently out there for directors and make sure it has a good fit for East Long Meadow. And there's people out there that are probably looking to, uh, move up the ladder in some shape or form. They're currently in this field.
So the hiring process will be collaborative with both you and our town manager?
Absolutely.
And our HR director.
And our HR director.
Um, a question I presume is that, um, as you look at the various templates that, uh, that are out there for directors, I, can we assume that the, the salary range is going to speak, follow whatever the industry standard is right now? Is, is that fair to say?
We've been looking at that as well.
Our, our budgeted amount is, is right within the guidelines of what, um, actually Westfield, which is a bigger area, was, was just a smidge higher than what we, we budgeted. So I think, I think if we, through Denise, because that's, that, that goes to her and that's not Jeff and I, when that comes down to it, I think we're, we're well within the range to, to get it qualified.
And I guess something that we need to remember that I've learned through this process because I'm not a police officer and I'm not a fireman or an emergency me- medical person, but if you have police dispatching, they do it one every 24th time or something because there's 24 officers. So it's not their primary function. They, they're good at it. We haven't gotten in any kind of trouble. They, they're conscientious and they're good at it, but it's not their main thing. They don't do it all day long. By doing it all day long, you get better. You have that memory of, okay, there's another one of those kinds and you can do it. Where you might not get that if you're one in 24 in line to do that. So that in addition to the potential cost savings if we can partner with somebody else and getting our officers policing that are, that spend the time at the desk, there's also the quality of dispatch that we will get. We will, we will get better dispatching. And that's great for the community and great if we can share that. Um, East Long Meadow is, is known, uh, I've come to realize, uh, come to learn, um, to give quality and to, to do the right thing in the right way. So I think to do that here is, is really a, will be a credit to the community.
Any other questions?
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion of some nature to.
Or do we, we've already appropriated the money? I think, no, we're just waiting.
We're just waiting to see the deal.
There's a motion on your, your suggested motions to continue.
May I add one thing?
Certainly.
So we're waiting to hear on Hamden's end of the deal now because we proposed the contract to them, right?
Yes.
Um, if you were to give us the green light to move ahead now by the time they answer, if you aren't so inclined to make it happen for East Long Meadow only and if Hamden comes on board, so be it, that's great. Um, I think if you give us the green light now, either way, Hamden or not, we can get moving forward if you believe in the concept, I guess.
We have a running start that way and that's what we would prefer.
If you say Hamden's out and you say we still want East Long Meadow to go forward, then I think you ought to take a look at that right now and see if that's in your playbook versus waiting for Hamden to give an answer, then you're gonna come back to the same question.
No, that we, I think we understand. It would still be at least a week away or more until the Hamden select board has some discussion with their attorney. I mean, that could. with their attorney. I mean, that could go back and forth for a while.
I was going to say, we expect that if they're, if they're not happy with it, that they would come back and negotiate.
There may be some play back and forth.
Absolutely. But in the meantime, we could be hiring, as long as the council is in agreement that we continue either way.
Right.
I think that's what was, Council.
Just in general.
Joe's statement was whether we go with him or not, it's going to be in East Long Meadow, and then we try to open it up.
So the suggested motion, which the clerk has put before us, but I'm not quite sure that the wording would apply here, and let me go back to where it is, approve the continuing negotiations of a combined dispatch program with the town of Hamden. That's already, that's in play.
And as well as, I mean, I can create a motion if you guys are so inclined, but I just feel like we approved the money last year. We just have to say, yes, we think you should go in this direction. I don't know that that requires.
Well, the money's been appropriated, which is our primary responsibility in the whole scheme of things.
So maybe it would be just acknowledgement that?
Acknowledgement that the chiefs should proceed with their next step.
Well, not, not just that, because if, if they proceed with the next step, which would be all of us working toward the hiring of at least a director, but hiring totally of dispatch, civilian dispatch, next year, if it's not clear right now that whether we are in a shared service or our own independent dispatch, the council's on board for that, we could have a problem with the budget next year. Know what I'm saying? So I think it's just acknowledgement that we will establish a civilian dispatch and expect to be negotiating with a community to share that, in that dispatch.
So through the chair.
So that should be a separate motion then?
So can the motion be to move forward with East Long Meadow either hosting a shared dispatch or going on, going alone, so they'll have, so they'll start moving, and if it doesn't work with Hamden, to try to find other suitable suitors to partner with us?
That's, that's a clear.
Which would trigger then the, the action of beginning the hiring of a director.
Through the chair.
We'll start.
There's something that's been just going around in my head, and I wanted to come out and talk about it. You're looking at creating a director of dispatch. It's a new position, and it sounds like it's a new union as well.
We don't establish a union. They would petition.
In other communities, it's been a union established through dispatch.
But the union comes from the.
It's likely that they, they would petition to.
Become a union.
To, yeah.
Right.
Form a union, which wouldn't start right away, but yeah, it's likely that there will be a union. Most dispatchers are, they would not, I would not encourage them to be part of the police union. They would form their own. And it would be a small union, but they would form their own. It's not.
Be number six, right?
Yeah. It's not a, it's not going to be proposed under the police union.
And it's not something that's really.
It's not a process of control.
No. We don't, we don't say we want union employees when we don't have a union.
No.
It's up to them. I'm sure unions will be approaching them and saying, come to us, and then they would petition and form the union.
It's a unit. Sometimes, like Wolverhampton, it's all their dispatchers, their public works employees, and the clerical are currently under one union.
Right, and they might do that.
I believe there's some negotiating going on now to break them out. Very similar to the paraprofessors are a different unit under the teachers.
Correct.
It's the same union, but it's.
It's a different piece.
Because they will operate differently than the clerical staff.
I don't think that's within the council's control.
No, that's right.
That's, that's between the employees and the agency that approaches them.
Correct.
Has any thought, excuse me, through the chair, has there been any thought to, the chief earlier in the budget process asked for a lieutenant in executive command position within the police department to help fill some voids that he has. Is there an opportunity to do something like that and have the, we'll call it executive or second to command, run the dispatch? Has that been thought about?
That's not the model that we're going to, but the chief and I are constantly talking about the next step, which would likely be a lieutenant.
Our director is actually a working director. We were following Wolverhampton's model. So this person would actually be a dispatcher Monday through Friday for the 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM shift.
But do all the schedules?
Do administrative.
So having Councilman O'Connor idea of having a lieutenant in that, in that area, it doesn't really eliminate hiring anybody. We would still hire the same amount of people, whether a lieutenant oversee it or there was a director. Same number of people. The director may obviously get more money for doing a little bit more work than the regular dispatch person today who would be charged with more responsibilities, but it really doesn't cut a whole position out of the scenario.
And a police lieutenant position is much higher rate.
It would be different.
Then, then what?
That's a whole different, we can go to a whole different discussion.
And you're also taking an officer off the street that we're trying to, you know, if you had a lieutenant as a director, so that's what we're trying to avoid by doing this.
But there's, I just want to make a point that we wouldn't hire any less people by having a lieutenant oversee it. There's still be the same amount of hiring of the dispatchers that would not reduce by having.
And one thing too is that this, having it in our police station currently, it would, it eliminates the problem of being a dark station ever. No need to worry about having, getting that person in there as a greeter in that dispatch, and if the grant money allows us to do some refurb in that, Jeff has got some really good ideas how to segregate that off and.
And Chief, you're confident that, well, we're hopeful. We have had some notice from Senator Lester's office that the $1.1 million grant will, is forthcoming at some point in the governor's process.
And I'm going to pin him down in about two hours.
Well, that's funny. That's the other way. I've seen him at the vigil.
Right, if he's there.
He's supposed to be there.
Well, if he sees us, maybe he'll just stay in his car.
Are you packing?
So with that, with that, with that caveat, if you want to follow us as far.
Which is a separate whole matter, but it conveniently merges with the timeline of a proposed dispatch.
Put that into our plan moving forward. We have a plan right now for immediate future for dispatching, whether another community comes on board, but with that additional money, I think we have, we can look at a bigger plan that will accommodate a better scenario for dispatching, maybe a third community if it ever got to it, another, another position in a dispatch center. Right now, we're looking at two positions. Maybe that money will allow us to have three positions with some kind of configuration.
Because of space increases.
Because of space increase, yeah. So we would, I would, I would at least look at that as moving forward as part of, if that money is available to increase the look for the future of dispatching out of, out of that department, not necessarily in a department, but out of that building, and be separate from the police department, obviously.
But going forward, right now, you're confident that you have enough space to do this and keep the, those employees separate from the police officers and that, the police department personnel?
Yeah, we'll, we'll throw up some doors that have been taken down to open up, that would make the flow of space easier. I'm not going to throw Ryan into this mix right now because he's staying out of it, but I've met with Ryan, and he's met with a vendor, and we have come up with a two-position console area there. We rearranged what we got. There is a lot of clutter in that dispatch area right now. I think we can minimize some of the clutter and maximize the two positions there to make it work. Is it the best solution? No, but it, it should work based on the vendor we spoke to. We have enough room to do it, and then we have a back room off of that initial room that we can utilize for the director, whoever that may be, whatever road we go down to, to have some space to do their thing. So it is cramped up there, but I think we have enough space to make it happen for the near future moving forward. And again, that $1.1 would come in handy and give us some food for thought with a different layout.
And with not having the dark station, there was an $80,000 annual cost to East Long Meadow for that greeter. So that's a, that's something that's folded into the savings that we, we would have by being the home base for it.
Yeah, so you take that 50-50 split we were talking about, then you add the 80 or 85,000 for the greeter in there, and so you're actually up around 311, 400,000, basically moving forward to another community. So, I mean, that wasn't talked about a lot, but it's in there. We did some moving around and taking a daytime personnel to cut down that 85, but at the end of the day, it still was around 80, 85,000 to keep.
To keep the station.
Yeah, and let the residents of the town, you know, have some feel that they still have a police department, you know, so.
Okay, so back to.
The motion.
Where we were.
Don, do you want to give it a shout?
Sure, I'll do. I'll make the motion that we continue, I'm trying to think, is it authorization or we just, what do you want, a recommendation? Or is it authorization? What are we looking for through the chair?
I don't think it should be recommendation, but rather.
What's the word I'm looking for, the descriptive word?
Direction to move forward with.
There you go.
The allocated, you know, FY 19.
Budgeted funds.
Budgeted funds, regardless of, you know, entering into a partnership with another municipality at this point, that they would move forward with the hiring process.
For in-house dispatch.
For in-house dispatch.
There you go. I'll second that.
Motion's on the floor and has been seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, six to zero. I'll note that Counselor Kane has not participated in the discussion nor in the vote because of a perceived conflict of interest. So after consultation with the ethics commission, he and I agree that he should remain silent on the matter going forward.
Thank you for that direction.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item C3 under Old Business, the town manager compensation discussion. I put before you on the top of your packets this evening some background information relative to language in our town manager's contract, as well as the reference to the town charter relative to the residency of a hired town manager. And if I can only find my own copy, then we can continue forward, I think. So that said, what the council needs to do going forward is to have that discussion about the town manager's compensation. Denise's contract was put into force on December of 2016 and runs till December 15th of 2019. We are a hair more than halfway in it, and if you look at your backup, you'll see that Section 5B of the manager's contract speaks to each subsequent year in the agreement, additional merit increases or other compensation may be awarded in a sum, the determination of which is solely at the discretion of the town council, and will be based upon an evaluation by the council of the job performance of and achievement of performance goals by the town manager. I'll also note that back in April, the council did complete an individual evaluation, performance evaluation of the manager. There was a subcommittee of Counselor Ford, Counselor Federicii, and myself, and our task was pretty much to merge the consensus of the evaluation and bring it forward, and it was then presented to Denise. The date escaped me, but it was late April or early May. That said, it was a favorable performance evaluation for the time period that, for the previous year. So going forward then, I will entertain a motion to whatever the pleasure of the council is as it relates to compensation. So, question?
Madam President, as duly stated, the performance was certainly above average. You know, with that performance being above average at her current residence, which is not East Long Meadow, so her residency has no bearing on her performance. She's proved that out. So this was put in here into the charter. She's the only town employee that would be required to do that. I have no issue whatsoever in offering another waiver of that, and maybe we should address it on an annual basis at her performance review time each year. Also, the other point I would like to make is that essentially she has less than a year and a half left on her contract. I wouldn't move for a year and a half left on a contract. It doesn't mean she's not invested in the town. She's doing things that are beyond the scope of what is required for her from a time commitment, so I have no issue in waiving that and then, but yet addressing it on a, on a anniversary date along with the performance, and then addressing, you know, future contractual obligations going forward.
So as a follow-up to that, let me say that the anniversary date of the town manager's contract is mid-December of each year, and we are barely four months away from that. Admittedly, the evaluation that we conducted was out of sync with the natural cycle of things, and in speaking with our town attorney, his recommendation would be to align the evaluation process and the compensation discussion to better fit the anniversary date. And so in order to do that, we're, we were out of alignment, and now we're mid-cycle beyond that. So his recommendation is that we undertake a six-month evaluation from this past May and have that completed in this coming November-ish, so that that work is done and we can make that judgment about compensation for the final, the year three of three contract. Does that make sense to you all? And I discussed that with Denise in a previous informal conversation about, it might look odd that we're now doing an annual evaluation. We're doing a six-month to try to bring the alignment.
I'm actually doing that with my managers. If they're out of sync with their anniversary date, some had contracts that started July 1st, because a lot of things start July 1st, I'm putting them to their anniversary date so that it's in sync with that. So I'm totally on board for that.
Questions, other discussion?
Yeah, through the chair. Just for some clarification, is with our new town council, SCL, is the town council's primary fiduciary duty to the town manager's office, or can that individual, Kevin, give us unbiased opinion in reading this contract?
Absolutely.
I can answer that because I've had that hard discussion with him last week, because in a previous conversation that I had with him in mid-July, he, the statement he made would lead one to believe that the fiduciary, he saw his fiduciary responsibility more to the town manager. So I posed that scenario to him specifically as related to how do we negotiate a contract if you're the manager, you're the attorney for the town, where does the council go if it seeks relief from a grievance? And that's a, that was a potential scenario. I'm not suggesting that there's one on the table, just the what-if. In a very frank conversation with him last week, he said that if that was the impression he gave, he didn't mean to, and he feels that his fiduciary responsibility is to the people of East Long Meadow, the town of East Long Meadow.
Okay.
Who are paying his.
His retainer, correct.
I, I, that's my understanding as well. If, if, if there were ever a, an issue with my performance or something in the contract, that's for me to hire my own personal attorney.
Exactly. Were that scenario ever to play out, as the employee, no, I understand that, but for the public's understanding, the employee would. that, but for the public's understanding, the employee would seek private counsel about it.
Correct. He is the town's attorney.
Right.
He's here for the town's business. In actuality, day-to-day, I'm the business manager. So he would, he would advise me on the business of the day, but if you all have issues, absolutely.
Or just an interpretation of some language, we just like to think that, that his communication to us would not necessarily find its way back to you because you're the one who hired him and you don't know this.
Well, you're an attorney, you know.
Well, that's why I'm asking, specifically.
There's no relationship with he and I.
In my conversations with Mr. Maynard over the last week, as it relates to the town manager's contract, I, I'm satisfied that should there have be any confidential discussions, it's attorney-client privilege prevails there.
Okay, good.
And I was not even aware of those discussions.
So going back to Joe's comment about residency, let me just, for if those who are listening, just point out that that clause in the contract says, "It is the condition of this agreement and continuing employment hereunder unless waived by the town council that the town manager shall within eighteen months establish and maintain residency in the town in accordance with the Town Charter." The town manager agrees that she shall furnish documentation to the town council that she has established permanent residency within the town. That said, the attorney's interpretation of that is pretty straightforward, just as it says, the council has the right to draw the line in the sand at eighteen months. We're actually twenty months in, or it can extend the waiver. And it can also use the waiver, I mean, excuse me, the, the condition of not invoking the residency as consideration of compensation. Does that make sense? For instance, you know, we don't have an issue with the manager living not in East Long Meadow, but we regard that benefit, if you will, to have X amount of dollar value.
There's no bearing.
Yes.
Being part of the original subcommittee that negotiated the contract, that's what we did. We took into consideration waiving the residency requirement. We felt that if she could do her job from out of town and do it in a satisfactory condition, that we would waive that requirement for eighteen months, and I don't believe anything's changed. She's, she's here every day. She puts her time in. She does a good job, and it was in lieu of compensation. So I think that, as, as you said, Joe said, that it wasn't part of, you know, her residency. Wasn't part of the contract, but I, I feel in fact it was, and that's why we came up with the figure that we came up with, the one twenty-seven-five, that there was a value of not, her having not to relocate. And none of us would expect her to relocate with the amount of time left on that particular contract. So I, I would be in favor of, of working terms out and not, and extending the residency requirement or relieving that and leaving it as is and work the compensation end of it from there.
Through the chair, should we make, take a vote to formally waive the residency requirement?
I would recommend taking the vote, and that way I'll ask Attorney Maynard to fashion a statement that we can append to the contract with signature saying that from now until the December of two thousand nineteen, the council has waived residency, just so there's, it's on record.
That's good. Geez, I thought we were only doing this for six months. I was worried there for a second.
In reality, regardless of that clause or not, a year from now, we would start successor agreement negotiations. You'd do that with any employee group. You don't wait till the deadline and say, so what do you think? So we're really talking about more or less a year left before we begin to have those discussions, so. I just think it's prudent then so that there is no misunderstanding that the council has waived it and that it's memorialized. So?
Sure. Do you want a motion?
Certainly, unless there's more discussion.
I'll, I'll have the discussion within the motion. I mean, I'll discuss it now. I just want to make, I mean, may as well. I agree because of the current contract. However, it is important to me, and I agree with the consensus of the council as I understand it, that there is a monetary value to living in this town. I mean, it's a, you know, not, not, you know, quashing any level of commitment, but to me, if you're living in the town of East Long Meadow, you really have, not that you don't have skins in the game, but the, the real skins are in the game. You're a taxpayer to the town. You're a voting person in the town. There's that. So there's a, there's a value to that in my book. So I think that's something that in future negotiations, you know, that's something we have to weigh. It's not merely we're discounting because of a great job. I do think there is some dollar value to making that commitment of jumping in and saying, yes, I am not only pardon the term, CEO of this community, I'm a stockholder. I'm involved. I'm in it. I am part of it. And, and, but I understand it's silly to try to say in a year and a half, but I think it does have value in renegotiation.
Going forward, whoever the subcommittee is, that would negotiate the contract from the council.
I just want to make sure that's incorporated, you know, that, you know, I'm also supporting the next motion to waive, but at the same time, I want the record to show that there is, I feel, value to it, and that should be noted as we move forward.
But let's say through the chair, there's also the thought process of if you've got somebody really good, you don't want to discount them because they don't live in town, so you got to look at both sides of the picture.
I'm just.
I mean, it's all.
I mean, I, I, well, I said a million times, I voted for Denise three times, and she's
Finally got it right.
She's been cursing me ever since. So, but, but, you know, thinking that she's done a very good job, you know, I'd hate to see that be a sticking point to not keep her if we decide in a year and a half, you know, to actually, you know, to keep her. And, and another thing to consider, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to say this gently, but if Denise was thirty, that's the best way I could put it. I apologize. I would lean more towards possibly moving into town if it's going to be a long, long-term commitment, but, you know, you know what I mean?
I think without picking first day standards.
That's well said.
Thank you.
Glad you charged on there.
I didn't know where you were going, but.
I was trying to be as, you know, as a rogue elephant could be.
Through the chair, I just want to add to that, there's a finite number of people. We went through the application process, right? We, we have somebody that is invested in the town, and I understand where you're coming from town, you know, but I happen to live in this community. I'm not moving out of this community. I'm not moving to Boston where I work, where they ask me to move all the time, which I refuse to do. So, you know, there, there's, like, it, it's okay not to live in the community. I, I really believe that. That's my opinion. I respect yours. I can tell you, there's a neighboring community that's been looking for a town manager for a substantial amount of time because they have that clause and they will not waive it, and people and applicants know that. You're, you're really limiting your ability to attract and, and retain top talent, and we're, we're also making a relatively short-term commitment in a three-year contract, which we're now, you know, a year and a half through. So, you know, I, I am, you know, of the mindset that not only am I thinking of waiving this, but I still think there's, there's a compensation amount that should be commensurate with her performance. So I'm not just waiving it, but I, you know, and, and if we want to discuss, you know, maybe in the next review, you know, that as, as a terms of compensation, but I, I don't think that was disclosed to her, so nor would that be fair to overperform our expectations and then say, there's your, there's your raise, you just, we get to waive that again. That's not my thought process in this whole thing. So I, I want to just make sure the motion is separated into two, and I'll be prepared to make a recommendation on compensation when we're done.
I, I see it as two separate issues. I understand what you're saying.
Right, I just want, through the chair, just a comment. I agree with you, Joe. What I want to have on the table, as we say in the legal biz as a dicta comment in an opinion, is that someone in the future, years from now, she decides to retire, someone in the future now lives in Southbridge and comes in and says, you know what, you're, I watched your YouTube video discussing that. The council seems to have a precedent where you don't care based on performance, so why are you bringing it up now? I want to make sure that we have preserved our rights. Somebody once told me, all rules apply except when they don't. So if we still have rights to move forward, we may in the next contract also do it. We still may also have compensation, notwithstanding. I just want to make sure that future people watching us, future town managers, don't think that the interpretation of the charter by this council was that, that it's immaterial where you live, but I do agree with you.
Yeah. No, it's a good point. It's a good point, Don, and I'm glad you clarified it. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And listening to the conversations, the key thing that's still in play is that the charter says, shall. Charter says, shall. So we're making a decision to overrule the charter. We've done that for eighteen months. So are we willing to do it again? I just want to come out and make that statement, that this is an issue with the charter. The charter says, shall move to town unless waived by the town council. So we as the council, or the original council, made that decision to overrule that charter.
Because we have the ability to.
We have the ability to. So what are we proposing here to overrule the charter again? To extend that?
We're, we're talking, I apologize.
I think what we're about to propose here is that for the balance of this previously negotiated contract, the council is willing to waive the residency requirement for the last sixteen whatever months are left on it. I don't think we're, the, I don't, what I'm not hearing is that we're taking the stand that going forward in perpetuity, that we're going to, with subsequent managers, waive residency. Because having spoken with some of the folks who were on the original Charter Commission to write the charter, the intent was initially to, to jumpstart the whole government process, the new government process, was to put some wiggle room, the intent was for residency of a town manager, but to put some wiggle room there in order to, which goes to your remarks, attract qualified candidates who would join the council in kickstarting a new government. I do think, from what I'm hearing from some of those folks, that it, and, and I'm told that that debate went back and forth for a fair, you were on the commission, it went back and forth for a fair amount of time. But the, the middle ground they found was residency was important to them, but they wanted to allow some local control of that, and they wrote that in there for the council. So that said, I'll entertain a motion to extend, or to waive the residency requirement for Denise Maynard through the end of her present contract, ending on or before, around December fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Through the chair.
Okay, now we have to at least have the conversation around compensation.
Yeah, and my recommendation, you know, based on kind of industry average, based on the performance review that was done in April.
April.
I would recommend, or I'd be comfortable approving a three percent increase, bringing the total compensation up to one thirty-one, three twenty-five.
Any other discussion?
I would ask, what, could we discuss what other department heads and/or teachers, what that compensation package looked like?
I can speak to the first year of the teachers' three-year contract. They had just started year one of a three-year contract, and for the unit A, which is strictly the classroom teachers, it is not the paraprofessionals or any of the ancillary workers. It's strictly the certified staff. It, the first year is a one point seven five increase. Anticipating in that kind of a question, I've spoken with our HR director, and based on the contracts that are currently, have been ratified, which are public now, the raise across the board was two percent. I can't speak, nor would she, and rightfully so, to the ones that are currently in negotiation, obviously. So one point seven five and, and two for the other.
Now, those are the, the contracts?
Correct, the union raises, yes.
Do we know anything about department heads?
I, I just printed, not, I didn't print the increases for department heads, but I, I printed a list of, I think it's the top twenty salaries. A lot of them are school-related, but, but it does have, I went down far enough so that, so that it does have my salary and some managers as well.
And I'm looking at this as more of comparative to the open market versus a union employee who, regardless of performance, is part of that union, and they could be the top performing person or the bottom, and they're going to get the same raise.
Right.
So I look at this more as a CEO, president, you know, obviously she carries the manager's title. That's why, you know, in doing my research, and I have access to a lot of data, you know, based on that performance, I felt like that was fair compensation.
Any other discussion? I, I think that was just a double. In the chart that you sent forward, there are the top ten paid employees in the town. Sixty percent of them are school department employees, and we all acknowledge that that's a whole separate entity.
I wasn't trying to.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
What's the council's pleasure? We need a motion in order to.
I haven't. I just opened it up for discussion. I said that was, that was my, that would be my comfort and my recommendation.
Sir, it's fair.
Do you like a motion, Madam President?
We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the town manager a three percent raise retroactive back to her anniversary date of.
Two thousand, December of two thousand seventeen.
December fifteenth of two thousand seventeen.
Through December fifteenth of two thousand eighteen.
Through December fifteenth of two thousand eighteen.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And is retroactive, and I will note that with our accountant.
And it's not awkward to do that in front of the employee at all, just for the record.
I do that. I do that with all my managers, and sometimes there's pushback, and that gets a little awkward, but it's, that's all part of.
It's just like you're sitting right there staring at me, and I was talking, that's all. Anyhow, it's all.
And for the record, my husband is in the audience. It, it isn't because he needed to know if we were putting the house on the market or if we were celebrating a salary increase. It's because we're going to nine eleven celebration after.
I didn't recognize him without his Santa Claus outfit on.
It's a little warm for that.
Normally, he brings that stuff.
Thank you. Thank you.
The council, our condolences on your loss.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, thank you. Going forward to new business, and we apologize for the long wait, sir. The zone change request for Ecos Energy Solar Project, also located at the rear of T's Road. The petitioner, can please identify yourself for the council?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jim Martin. I'm the attorney of Officer Donovan, Springfield. Have the pleasure of representing both the owner and the developer of the proposed solar site located, proposed to be located here in East Long Meadow. We have filed a petition requesting the zone change from what the property is known as, as residential and to industrial garden in order to meet the zoning by law requirements that solar will be erected in that site. The process is that the petition is filed with the council. The council hopefully will refer this to the planning board where a public hearing is required under Chapter forty-eight. Public will have plenty of oppo- Public will have plenty of opportunity for input on the issues. Planning board has the obligation to either make a recommendation back to this body in support of the zone change, be neutral, or make a recommendation against it. In any scenario, the petition comes back to this council for ultimate decision. The property in question is a twenty-one acre parcel at the south end of town that borders Summers. We have filed with the planning board a set of complete plans in anticipation of having a hearing there. It's at the rear, there's no address, because there's no property on it, it's rear Pease Road, East Long Meadow. I suspect everyone knows where it is. It's a heavily dense wooded area. This property, from our judgment, is ideal for a development such as this. It is inaccessible lot, it has no frontage anywhere, even though it's a own residential. My client has the ability to access it, because they own the property in the south of it, in Summers, Connecticut, where it hopes to also build a solar array. That solar array has actually been approved by the town of Summers, but is awaiting construction based on what happens here. I can tell you some small particulars about the project proposed. Out of the twenty-one acres, about seventeen of the acres would be occupied by a solar array, would be a four megawatt facility. It, solar, as you know, is pretty unobtrusive in terms of, it'd be no lights, no noise, no pollution, everything will be underground, the overhead wires are already there to tie into the grid, so it doesn't require the building of a substation, it's accessible through Summers. We had the town roundtable last Friday. I believe all the department heads were on board with how the project was presented. I'm not saying they endorsed it, but, you know, every issue was addressed. It is a private road that will come to it through Summers. So some of the benefits of this for the town, in thinking forward, this is a renewable energy. I noticed today that California actually signed a bill into law, Governor Brown did, requiring that all of, one hundred percent of California's energy by twenty forty-five be from renewable sources. The benefit of solar is that there's no carbon emissions from it. It contributes, this project would contribute to the renewable energy goal of East Long Meadow. You have one array off of, shake, I believe, no, it's off of, 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 no, you see it?
Denzel.
It's off of Denzel, thank you. This property currently is wooded, inaccessible, non-buildable, it pays almost no tax, allowing a solar array to be built there would be an increase in income for the town, both for the real estate taxes and with the personal property taxes. With the increase of that income in this development-type project, there is very little expense associated. There's nobody going to be going to school if homes were built there, there is very little call for any emergency services, police, fire, DPW, no plowing, so, no ambulance. So it's a project that is pretty unobtrusive. As for the project itself, if you know the site, since the parcel is surrounded on three sides by woods, you can't see it. And when the solar array is built, you won't be able to see it. There are no houses built anywhere near it, so it won't have the, perhaps some standard objections about it being next to my house. And it'll be completely screened, and it doesn't create any traffic. There's occasionally a maintenance person to deal with it. It will be completely fenced in, security fence, but there will be no lights. It'll be properly maintained by the developer. So those are some of the benefits from it. I hesitate to touch on this, but I anticipate that at least someone's going to bring it up. So there, sometimes there's an issue on zone changes about spot zoning, because, you know, we're changing a zone from a residential to an industrial garden. But if you look at this general area, there are industrial garden zones to the left, or industrial garden zones to the west, I should say, there's residential to the right, and then there's other zones above it. So this is a mixed-zone area. And the law is pretty well-established, although sometimes gets lost in translation. Changing a zone of one parcel is, does not equal spot zoning. I had the pleasure of working last year on the Young Mansion Zone Change in Long Meadow, right in the center of Long Meadow. We were changing a zone from residential to professional. Everyone immediately assumed, like, there's houses all around the green, it has to be spot zoning. We fortunately were able to demonstrate that legally, there wasn't spot zoning. Planning board endorsed it, the selectmen endorsed it, went to a town meeting, they endorsed it, and the objectors appealed the town's vote to the attorney general. And I have the attorney general's opinion. The attorney general ruled in favor of the decision that it wasn't spot zoning. In fact, affirmatively said it wasn't spot zoning. So I could bore you with cases and statutes that would regale you, put you right to sleep on spot zoning, but that, this is not the time for that issue now. All I'm seeking tonight is to have you refer it to the planning board, so that the public can have a hearing on this. And those issues can be fleshed out, including the spot zoning issue, which may or may not impact their recommendation. And of course, we'll come back to you folks for a final decision on all of the issues. And whether, and, you know, we would suggest that the, the primary reason to grant a zone change is that it benefits the town. And here, we think there's all the right reasons how this will benefit the town, which I just enumerated. So I'd ask you to refer it to the planning board, so that the process can work itself out.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to do just that, but certainly discussion first.
Yeah.
Questions?
Couple comments that I have, and that obviously would be through the planning board, unfortunately, we have a planning board member here in the audience. You know, is, you had your roundtable, if there was, God forbid, emergency vandalism or something, the police and fire of Summers, Connecticut would be the response? Or would East Long Meadow police have to drive into Summers, Connecticut, kind of back-end it and find a way in?
There's going to be a road built that'll give it access.
There will be a road, okay.
Yes, so, I didn't want to get into all the details of building out the project.
Kind of important, though.
Well, we did discuss it at the roundtable.
Okay.
And I think that is a legitimate issue for the planning board and the roundtable. We discussed it, there will be, the plans show an access road going in.
So municipal services, in terms of emergency response, vandalism, whatever it will be, East Long Meadow police and?
Well, actually, the chiefs, which were both there, weren't sure they were signing up for that right away, but they would coordinate that, so that needs to be worked out.
So, okay.
But access in Egress will emanate from Summers.
From Summers, correct. Old Bilton Road?
Yes.
Yes.
The other concern is whether we're going a little too aggressive with the type of zone we're selecting, industrial, industrial garden. I mean, I think we're all, some of us are a certain age, and I'll point it myself, remember when satellite dishes were about ten to twenty feet? Now they're, it fit inside here. So solar power is right now these big arrays, and if it becomes so incredibly efficient, and your people say, we don't need to maintain this facility in year twenty forty-seven, and they come back and say, well, we have an industrial zone right here, let's put another facility in here, or something of that nature. That's a big concern to me. What I'm hoping, and with the wisdom of the, of the planning board, and then eventually perhaps the council is going to resurrect our subcommittee for zoning matters, to have a say on it, but my thoughts are, is make sure you've explored all options, whether it's an overlay, whether it's creating an alternate energy zone, like we have with golf courses or so forth. Because, you know, we remind ourselves, we are not voting on a project, we're voting on the zone change. And just like I mentioned earlier, when I was making comments about legacy, things are, you know, what we say here regarding waivers can be seen in future generations. And what we have here with a zone change to an industrial, industrial garden, if for whatever reason, that there's an efficiency that these solar arrays are not needed thirty, forty years from now, we permanently stamp this as an industrial footprint within a residential area. And that is something I'm really encouraging our planning board to really make sure that all options have been explored, whether it's some type of site plan, special use, within, within, work it so this, if it comes back to us, is the absolute last recourse, if you will. I feel like, said, I have an issue using a sledgehammer to pound in a nail. And I'm thinking that this, this kind of speaks to me like that. I'm not, you know, so, make sure all options are explored.
Well, yes, but for the benefit of everyone, this zone, these zones were changed because you, as a collective body, picked those zones as the only zones that solar could be built in. So in order?
Yet, we're doing a master plan.
Well, we have to deal with the zoning bylaws as they exist today, and if they change. But your point is well-taken, except for the fact that any place that's in an industrial or industrial garden now could change its use if the bylaws change or technology changes.
But we're in a position, going on through the chair, we're in a position that we can do that with this council, which, we can, we can entertain zoning bylaw changes, creating new zones, if it makes sense for the town of East Long Meadow, in light of our future. So we don't necessarily have to be within the constraints of having it either be residential or industrial. So I just want to say, is, I, you know, I ask to make sure all options?
Fair enough.
Outside the box, within the box, are explored.
That's fine. I have a question to the chair.
Yes.
I would ask, because we'd be referring this to planning, and from planning, it could come back to town council or will come back to town council. So my question would be, has there any, have you guys started with, and when I say you, I'm not sure if you represent the solar company at all, in any capacity, or do you represent the property owner at this point in time?
Property owner and the solar company are essentially the same entity. A gentleman has an LLC that owns the property, this property's owned, by the way, it's not leased, and he also owns the solar company.
Okay, so that was question one. So have you guys started any screening memos or impact studies?
We haven't done that yet here, but we would have to do that, we'd have to go through the conservation commission and go with part of the planning if this was approved. We want to, we want to make sure we can have a zone that we can build it in before we start that work.
That's it.
Okay, reasonable?
Yes. I wouldn't want to see a zone change take place and then have the screening memo come back or the impact study, or the connection fee not be feasible, and then we're, we have a zone change with a project that?
This would be their twenty-second project, so they are pretty professional and anticipate, and the drawings that are, have been submitted to the planning department already, show that they anticipate that there'll be some, you know, retention ponds to make up for the stormwater management, for taking up some of the ground that the array's on. So they're pretty sophisticated plans that Connie has on file in her office, just as an educational.
Is it tied in with the SMART program at all?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be. The SMART program has not been finalized, or has not been announced or approved yet. That's going to be, we anticipate in October, but it should be part of the SMART program.
Thank you.
Are there S-REIT credits, like, did the SMART start?
So SMART has taken the place, sort of, of those, yes, yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
A question for our viewing audience, and myself as well. Where is this, I'm not familiar with Pease Road here, and when I look at Pease Road, and I envision Pease Road intersecting, intersecting with Prospect Street?
Yes.
I don't see it touching Summers. I see it touching Enfield and the prison properties.
So if you go up Pease Road before you get to Prospect, you'll see houses, houses, then woods, and woods, and woods, and right when you get to the top, there's some more houses. So if you look south, there's other landowners who own that land, that's all woods, and then behind that woods is this rear Pease Road wooded lot.
Which would be Bilton's, touch on Bilton's property in Summers?
It does, yes. My client owns the Bilton property in Summers as well.
I've seen the map, but I don't understand the intersections of the road.
It doesn't, it's not at an intersection. It's before you get to the intersection, and it's deep into the, so that parcel does, in fact, I don't know if, someone just showed you the plan, I have a plan here.
I've seen the plan, but, again, for our residents, who are questioning whether this is a good idea, Pease Road rear means nothing. It means nothing to me, unless I looked at the map. And even looking at the map, I'm still unclear as to where it resides. Does it touch Greatwood?
No.
Does it touch the properties on the back of Prospect?
No. It touches, essentially because it's a rectangular piece, it touches mostly the Bilton property on the back, and then the private woods around it that are owned by another gentleman.
So it's pretty rectangular, so it's going to be narrow in nature, but very deep, because it's going to reach Summers.
Yes. It's twenty-one acres.
How large is the total parcel?
Twenty-one acres.
Okay, and you're going to be using approximately, I think you said seventeen?
Seventeen, yeah.
And I believe the intersection that everybody's talking about, the closest neighborhood, would probably be Autumn Ridge, which is off of Prospect Street, which is a dead end.
Right, but, but since we're in the middle of that, so if you take a square here, and then you put a horse collar around it, that's all woods, and we're in here, and the neighborhoods are here and up here, so it's, it's pretty well-deep in there. It wouldn't be, it would be totally inaccessible, but for the fact that they own the Bilton property and can come up through the south.
Right. To answer the question that was asked earlier, where would an access road from East Long Meadow?
It wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be. So our police and our fire, if there was an incident, would have to go through Summers?
Correct. If they were going to be responsible, we'd have to work that out with a host agreement, that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion then, to refer this request to the planning board, so that process of approval can begin.
So moved.
Seconded.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Good evening. Hope to see you again, not too far along.
Thank you. Under D., to new business, to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight J, the Disability Commission, powers and duties, members and terms. Mr. Florence, you're going to speak to that.
Yeah. These sentences are similar to when we accepted the veterans' exceptions for excise and real estate tax, we did in June. We have to have two public, we have to have two readings, which requires a public hearing. So let's, we absolutely will accept these provisions, but it just requires chap, section six, page six of the charter, but we just have to follow the procedures to have, make amendments to the bylaws and have public hearings in the areas.
So I can give background to this?
Certainly.
As you are, were made aware, I think a couple of meetings ago, we have gotten grant funding for the beginning of a process for an elevator in the town hall. In anticipation of the next steps of that, this is to do the engineering, the study, to look for other grant funding, which we would be able to apply for if we had this ADA commission, is one piece, one box to check off. And one that if you can't check it off, there are a lot of grant opportunities that we can't have. There, it appears there was an informal kind of ADA committee at some point, but it was not done through this process. So to put this process in place will certainly address the, you know, our, the town's need to support and enhance grant opportunities, but also to address any ADA issues that we possibly can. So it would be a diverse group, that we're looking at some employees, that there's certain parameters within the law, some employees within the town, but also some at large, and some with disabilities, to help us analyze what we need. So.
Any questions? Yes, it's actually your, your motion to make.
Got it. Okay. I propose a motion to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight J.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, I don't think we can accept them yet, because we have to go through the hearings and the first reading and second readings.
That's what you, oh.
Withdraw the motion?
Withdraw, and we'll just move forward with your schedule for hearings.
The president, I'd like to withdraw my previous stated motion.
Consider it withdrawn. Okay, so, Mr. Florence, you'll set that, the first hearing on that. Okay, and similarly, the next item is to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two G, funds received from fines for handicap parking violations, deposits in account, and expenditures.
And, and it's, it's the same process?
Same process.
Same process, different topic?
Yep.
So, that said, then, is there discussion about that particular one? It can be had during the hearing, I suppose.
Yep, we'll have to, two readings.
So that'll be referred to you, to set up that process as well. Item number nine, and public hearings, there are none before us tonight. Number ten, executive session, we have no executive session scheduled. So, item eleven? So, item eleven, adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at seven eleven. For viewing audience, if you have time this evening, the fire department is holding its annual nine eleven memorial vigil at the fire department. Please come out and join that if you can, otherwise, we will convene again on Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Thank you and good evening.
Yeah, except it's a juvenile here.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.